It's now 7 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting together.
I told you we were scheduled for that.
To order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from August 15th and September 19th. Has every board member had a chance to review them?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 15th, 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, 4 to 0.
That'll be 3 to 0.
Oh, you weren't here, sorry. 3 to 0.
Janu wants in here, you know.
In August? On August 15th?
So we have to wait on it. We'll have to wait on it.
Didn't I make motion, no?
No, you were away. We were both away. At the same time, I remember that.
Oh, all right, well.
Nancy will retract that. We'll hold the meeting. Notes for August 15th. There's only 2 board members here who'll approve it.
Table them?
We'll table if enough. When the board comes, we'll push it forward. Meeting of September 19th. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Same, same situation.
We only have 2 members here. Nancy, we'll table the minutes of September 19th. There's only 2 members here at that meeting. We'll table until the board comes.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we need a motion. I'll make a motion to table the minutes of August 15th and September 19th.
Second.
Before Long arrives.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, 4 to 0. Those will be tabled until Mr. Long arrives. Chairman's update. Nancy, do we have any new submissions at this time?
Yes, we have a subdivision plan for Essex Landing and an adsode plan for River Crest Circle.
And you will stamp them in for this evening?
Yep.
Any questions from board members? Consulting engineers report. The town does have a new engineer.
Kevin Hallahan.
Mr. Kevin Hallahan. This is his first meeting, so I don't think he's got much for us. Going forward, he'd be with the planning board. So we're looking forward to his input. Any of the board members have any questions?
Welcome to the planning board.
Welcome to the planning.
Been here, Kevin. It's been here, what, 3 weeks or a month now?
2 months now.
2 months? Wow, that's, see, time flies when you're having fun. We just figured we'd invite him so he can see what the meeting's like and then...
Sure.
You know, he's still trying to learn the lay of the land and get to go and run, though. He's getting a lot of good things done, so appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Now we're a little bit ahead scheduled. You want to make a motion to take a short break?
Why?
We don't have the time.
Yeah, we don't have the time.
Well, this is not, this is, no, that's right, this is an informal discussion, sorry. Okay. Nancy's going to record the subdivision plans that came in. Do you want to go with the A and R?
Yeah.
Do we have anyone here for Broadway Route 1? Williams and Spriggs?
Mr. Chair, I'm here with the applicant. Our engineer, Williams and Spriggs, has just caught in the traffic on Route 1. But I'm prepared to present if needed, if you'd rather wait for him.
There's a 3-car accident on Southbound.
We can take a temporary recess till he gets here and then they'll probably give Mr. Wong a few more minutes as well, if the board wishes to do that, and make a motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to take a temporary recess.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye. Motion passes, 4 to 0. We'll take a short recess and give the engineer a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you very much, too.
First, we have an A and R for, I believe it's the Shops of Sagas. Mr. Williams, would you like to?
Yes, good evening, Rich Williams, with Williams and Spriggs. As you know, we filed this approval on required plan. This is a plan that was filed in the past, I think it was 2021. And since that time, there have been some settlement negotiations and part of the settlement agreement between the applicant and the shops requires that parcel S1, which is part of our overall parcel, be taken out and transferred to the shops. That there is an encroachment that exists on S1 and the removal of that parcel and transfer to the shop solves the encroachment issue. Encroachment being the drive around the building. And it kind of goes hand in hand with the A and R that was signed by the board back in '21 for shops.
Okay, but it is a new A and R because of the transfer of the property?
Yeah, it's the same. It's basically the same plan. The only difference is that an address of the owner changed. Other than that, it's the same thing, but...
So I noticed on the plan, Rich, there's no documentation of an address here.
Where's the frontage on this?
The address?
Yeah, it should be on the plans, the submission.
It's listed in the application.
It needs to be on the plan itself?
It is on the plan. The owner's on there and it says it has the assessors, all of the assessors' maps under owner.
So I remember one thing that stuck out from that period when we looked at this last was that there was no direct access to that property from Route 1?
Well, there's an easement, an access easement.
But DOT didn't want any easement from that parcel to Route 1?
Well, DOT hasn't been...
It's on, it's...
Well, that's, the current, yes, the current highway layout has areas of access and no access, and those are listed on the plan. And there is an emergency access and the other access is the easement. In Book 5685, page 28, it's listed up the street.
So where's the frontage on this property? Which, what's this address going to be on the frontage? Where is the frontage? Where's the front of this lot? I'm confused.
Well, this lot does not have frontage.
That's correct.
Lots L2 and L3, which are being combined, has frontage on Route 1. This also has a piece of frontage on a paper street. It's not a buildable lot like it is. The purpose of the plan is to take a piece of S1 out. So it's not creating a building lot, but it's removing a piece and correcting an issue with the shops.
But that hasn't been registered with the registry at deeds to date, that which are proposing?
Well, we can't do it until you guys...
That's what I just asked.
That's correct, yeah.
And where was the old Lot 1? Wasn't it bigger than that originally?
No. No. Are you talking about S1?
No, no.
The lot L1?
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, no, they're the same lots that were on the...
Been a while. Trying to get you to read fresh. Because it's all the board members except for myself.
Mr. Chair, can we get a brief on just what the project is for those rest of the board here?
Just trying to understand the layout, yeah.
There is no project.
There's nothing?
No.
And is this currently in court right now? This parcel, this situation?
I'm going to let Haley answer that question.
There is a litigation on the L1 between the ownership and the town of Sagas.
So if you could explain that just a little deeper. So you're talking about subdividing Lot 1, but that is in litigation at this time?
Yes, but nothing in the litigation that is about S1 being conveyed to the neighbors. That doesn't impact litigation.
And I was counsel to the shops in that litigation. We were sued by her company, Aswas, the town.
Yes, Chair.
And as part of the settlement, when we built the shops, we paved over a piece that's theirs and have been chasing them to try to buy it from them back when it was Link and now that it's RFF. We've been trying to acquire that because our title is messed up with an important piece of our driveway on their land. So all this is doing is we finally settled with them and we're just, they've agreed to sell us this piece, so our property is...
When you say which piece, what piece are you talking about?
S1.
Okay.
So this has nothing to do with the development of L1. It just makes it smaller and gives us what we need, that our title is now clean. And that's all we're asking you to do is approve the creation of that piece so we can buy it and be done with it.
Board members have any questions?
I just, when I saw A and R on there, I just thought it was a simple A and R.
It's not a simple A and R.
I just would, I'm sure it's a simple procedure. I just think I'd feel better if we had counsel just give a quick look at it, if we could put it on the next agenda, if we could continue it.
What year was that, paving been? 2006. 6, wasn't it? And I've said this to Jesse Shoma. He was in Land Court with us when this first came up, so he knows the whole history. And I sent him this plan a couple days ago. But just so it's clear, this has nothing to do with the development of L1. This is purely to make shops in compliance with its boundaries ought to be, what it built on.
So you're looking for an A and R on this lot?
Lot L1, the only thing that's happening is it's getting smaller. Taking a piece, this S1, and then to the shops.
But it doesn't have the frontage, L1?
L1 does not have frontage.
It currently doesn't today and it won't afterwards.
And that's what our basis on approving an A and R is, isn't it? It has to have the frontage?
Yeah.
To be built on.
So how would we approve it if it doesn't have?
Well, this is why I think that they need to do a layout for us so we can see what we're losing to the shops on S1 and what we're picking up on L1 and...
And maybe before we ask them to do more work, maybe we could just have counsel look at it just to make sure we're not doing anything that we're not supposed to be doing, that we're not authorized to do.
We haven't been informed that it was part of Land Court.
I'm sorry?
We haven't been informed that this was all part of Land Court. The public board members.
Yeah, this went to Land Court in 2021 when you had denied both of the original A and R applications. Jesse was there and the Land Court judge made it pretty clear that we were entitled to have this done. We came back, you did approve ours, and they withdrew their application and sued us instead. So that sort of dropped away. So we do have, the shops piece has been A and R. I've got that plan. You may have it as well. This is the same plan RFF submitted, but they didn't follow through with the result of that Land Court case. But as I said, Jesse was there. I feel, if you feel you need to speak to him, obviously you can.
Yeah. I would feel, I feel better, so...
Just to add, though, I mean, and you're entitled to that, but to add is that you're not creating a lot that doesn't have frontage. It's a lot that doesn't have frontage that exists and we're making it smaller by giving a piece to the butter. And it's not a building lot and it won't be a building lot. So it really is not... The A and R process having frontage, if you note the lot is not a building lot and the notes do say that this is not a separate building lot, it can't be signed as an A and R.
I just, I believe you and I trust you, and I know you do work closely with Jesse. I just would feel that, and I'm just one person. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I just want to make sure if there's any litigation, ongoing litigation, that we're not doing something that we're not supposed to or it doesn't need to muddle the waters or anything like that. That's just my opinion, but you guys, if you guys feel comfortable voting it, then that's fine. I'm the only one person.
Yeah.
When our next meeting is...
Any other board members have anything to input, Mr. Long?
I'm not participating.
Not in this one?
So we're not interested in this?
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to see the plans. I haven't listened to the discussion, so I don't think I'd be fair to anybody if I did.
We meet again on the 21st. Would you guys be amenable to continuing it to the 21st?
Yes.
And then we can have time just to run a by Jesse and then come back? Is that okay?
Yep.
Motion from a board member?
So you'll just let Nancy know in writing that you've agreed to a continuance? Do you have to do that, Nancy, for an A and R?
You were going to need it from us.
Okay, okay. I make the motion to continue this to the annex meeting, which I think is just at the 14th? 14th? No, the...
21st.
21st?
Yep.
Let's look at that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 4 to 0.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry to make you sit in traffic and...
Oh, yeah, no worries.
Very typical. But somewhat different.
It's not just simple. An A and R, it's just simple.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is the informal discussion for 860 Broadway.
Good evening, board. Andrew Schaefer with Loses Development on behalf of the owner, Grandville Sagas LLC. Just wanted to come in and talk about a couple of things tonight. First, we wanted to just kind of give an update on the project, general overall progress. Then we have a minor modification, a clarification regarding landscaping on the southeast corner there and just wanted an informal discussion on upcoming occupancy and site logistics and access. So right now, Building 1, we're topped out in the final inspections with the town. Mike Levesque has been working through that with his staff and we've also had Captain Phelan out working through the final fire inspections. We're paved up through, just in front of Building 3. Building 3, which abuts Longwood Ave, we're topped out. They started siding. So they're waterproof, they're siding that and finishing the outside inside. They're working through rough-in inspections, hanging sheetrock. And then as some of you know, we are at slab level. They just finished pouring concrete on the last building today. Framing's starting to get delivered tomorrow. We plan, we have the approval from the building official. We're going to start framing on that as soon as we're ready to, in the next week or so. Questions?
So we did reach out and speak to Phelan and he had said that he didn't, they didn't take a truck in and get around?
Not yet. They're working on it.
Even close to being ready for occupancy?
We can talk about that when we go through the logistics plan and he has been involved in that.
And then there were some concerns of telephone poles being placed in the sidewalks, which was creating a handicap?
Yeah, that's correct. I'll take that. Rick Salwell with Engineering Alliance. So, yeah, the utility poles weren't laid out properly. They didn't have to drill the sidewalks. Dave Wise actually goes there tomorrow to locate all the poles and then we're going to work with National Grid and hopefully this board will generate a solution to that.
To fix it, okay.
It can't stay the way it is, for sure.
And then I know the charging stations had moved. How does that affect the...
That's the modification that we wanted to talk about originally on the plan. There were no charging stations outside the building. Most of our developments have them inside the garage or if they're, you know, single-family developments, we put them inside the garage there. We showed the circuits on the plans that were approved. Captain Phelan came in. Being life safety, he claimed, asked for them to be removed and all the circuits capped. We abided by that. We have to respect his rule on that. But we do think it's still a benefit to have electronic charging with how prevalent electric vehicles are these days. So we're actually proposing to place 3 locations, each with dual heads, so a total of 6 locations. It's about 1 and 1/2% of the parking spaces for EV. And they're shown on those drawings, which I think Rick has already provided to the board. So we're looking for a minor modification for that.
So that doesn't change the parking spaces or anything? It just puts the EV charging station at those particular spaces?
Except those, without the, because you can't stay in the charging. You have to kind of rotate them out, right? So it wouldn't be...
The program that we use, they actually can stay in the space overnight. There's a charging aspect to it where after it reaches a certain point, it starts charging back to customers. So there's, you know, technology and software involved. But yes, they're EV-designated spaces. And we're already overparked on the site as it is.
Okay. Right, so one factor, I think, you know...
No, if you remember correctly, this, we had 290 spaces required by zoning. I think we're providing 414 spaces, even if you took those spaces out of the equation. And this is, we're running into this in most communities. Most fire prevention officers are requesting that the charging station is given. It's just easier than if one of these cars catches on fire. It's easier for them to be able to hook it and get it out of there. There's a whole host of reasons for...
Right, makes more sense, yeah.
Yeah, and we get it and all those circuits with cap breakers removed, everything. So there's not even the ability to charge inside the building, no.
And then one of the other concerns was that they had made a condition when they removed the vegetation in the buffer zone in the back, that they were going to replace them with 12 to 15-foot trees?
That's the next, I know we were going to talk about. It's actually the clarification.
So I'll just stay quiet and let you do it.
No, no, you're fine. Ask away.
That was the one that I had, too.
So you have the other plan? Behind that one?
One of the plans.
Did you bring the...
No, this is, this is, it's on the site, yeah.
So originally, we had tried to reach out to the previous planning director. It kind of got stalemate or kind of lost in translation there. So we actually reached out to some of the butters, got their input. We're prepared to, and we have currently access to 7 large caliper trees, 15 to 20-foot blue spruce and I think there's 6 blue, yeah, blue spruce and one white pine. We can get those fairly quickly. So the proposal was to put those as high on the mound or the hill as possible to kind of limit the access and the sightline.
And how many trees?
It would be 7.
7.
And this is, and I apologize if this is silly. We actually just got this information. We can try and hunt it down for a couple of weeks now.
Yeah, because I...
And I know Mr. O'Brien's been trying to do the same. Trees, big trees like that are tough to come by this time of year. But we did find through a landscaper, a place down in New Jersey that has available 6 16-footers and 1 18-footer, all white pines, which are available to us, which we could take delivery of right now. And we've got the pricing and the ability to, and the contractor ready to go that can plant those with you. The idea would be to change this a little bit. We'd submit a revised plan for you so you'd have it formally with the actual heights on them because you still have the old heights from the old plan, which was 10-footers, I think. So it would have 7 10-footers planted on the top of the burn all the way across and then we would sprinkle a bunch of 10 to 12-footers down the hill. The 10 to 12-footers can be locally sourced, so those are available around here. And we'll be able to plant those headed down the, headed down the salt to fill that area in with a good green buffer.
And you met with some of the residents, you said, the butters?
Yeah.
And then obviously, we would just caveat that with, there's a water line in there and a sewer line. We would just have to work around those to get those planted.
And is there irrigation there to water these or...
No, they will...
There'll be a watering program that would go along with it to ensure the, I mean, these trees are very expensive, so...
So there would be some guarantee on them, I'm guarantee, I would guess, right?
Well, there will be a real watering program to make sure that they survive.
I think they take 200 gallons a day. It's like 6 months. We can provide all that if the board's interested.
Okay, yeah, please, thank you.
What's the reason for the change in the planting layout?
It was never a change. It was, this area over here was always meant, I think if you read the condition, it was supposed to be at the planner's discretion.
It's actually condition number 1.
To them for their review. And we kind of had to change it in the guide with the planner. She thought that it would be best. I know there's a new planner here and I think she was at one of the meetings, maybe it'd be best just to bring it back and forth and forth.
Sounds good.
And then 2 other minor aspects. Obviously, we're amenable to raising the height of the fence and adding some privacy screening in there. It's going to cost us a little bit, but we're willing to do that.
And there's the ground cover, too.
I don't think you need ground cover if we do the trees. It'd be kind of hard to do that. And then grading, there's some minor grading that needs to be done around where the water line connection is.
So what's the timeline on these, I mean, Mother Nature's been really great to us, but that could change overnight?
Yeah, that's the one thing. We'd love to be able to get a thumbs up from the board on at least the 7 large caliper trees because I think our plan would be to order them tomorrow and take delivery of them as soon as they can be delivered and get them in the ground.
How does the board feel about that?
I mean, we would be open to the butters' kind of input on where to place them based on. We can work through that and just make sure that it's acceptable.
Is 7 big trees there sufficient? How many trees were taken down?
More than 7, but...
Oh, there'll be more than 7 planted, but only 7 large, like 16 to 18-footers along the top and it'd be...
And that goes in front of the fence or on the other side of the fence?
We kind of have to go on both sides of it, we think, based on where the property line is.
And you're extending the fence. Now, how are you doing that? You're just going to add like a...
Well, there's 6-foot fence called on the plan, so basically from the corner of Building 3. Yeah, the section all the way around to, I guess, call that the eastern corner of the building, the property line. We'd do that 8 foot.
Where's Longwood in relation to that, right there? Yeah, okay.
So we would do 8 foot, raise that up 2 feet for where it is now and add some privacy slot to it.
So the closest to Butter is right here and the fence that he's talking about would extend all the way along here.
So currently, there's not a fence there. I was going to drive by the meeting today and I...
They do have fence up right now because we have site security and they installed what's showing on the plans right now up until, I think, just about the southeast corner there, but we'll raise that up.
So when you say you'll raise the fence, what do you mean?
It'll go from 6 feet to 8 feet.
Okay, so you change a hole in the fence or just add into that?
Yeah, we'll take out, you know, I think the poles there might actually accommodate it right now, but we'll just get larger chain link and install that.
The chain link, that, oh.
Yeah.
We just thought they said they were doing white.
Yeah, it was black chain link and this will have the privacy slats in it.
Yeah, we had discussed white vinyl. It's probably not the best thing to put in there, although it might look nice now. I mean, when you're in a wooded area like that, I think it's going to weather pretty quickly and deteriorate and not look very nice. So our thought was black vinyl. So our thought was black vinyl with some vinyl privacy slots, so it kind of blocks the light a little bit more.
So right now, there's fence there, but it doesn't have the privacy slots?
No, and we actually submitted in January of last year, when we started going through this with Chris Riley, there was a study, we gave him the grades in the berm. There's actually about 10 feet already from the grade of the parking lot to the top of the berm, elevation difference, so we would be 10 plus eight.
And you stepped in from the, as the chair, I'm sorry, Kevin, as the board, but as an abut, do you want to go sit out there and, as a resident, do you have anything to say?
No, no, Glenn, they've been very good working with the abutters. Some that we've looked forward to for two years now, so they're moving forward. This is the start, I think the abutters are in agreement, just what they want to do.
And if this had to be done in the spring, would it not be accessible? You know?
Well, that's the other, well, right now, I think, just due to the size of the trees, that's one thing we didn't talk about yet, I think they would have to have access from Longwood Ave to get the equipment back there to plant large caliber trees like that. We just don't have the ability to reach it from the site that's fenced in right now. So that would, you know, it's another thing, we just need to put out there and make sure everybody's aware.
And have you discussed that when you met with the neighbors already?
No, it just came up, we just thought about it today, because the caliber trees that we have are able to get, they're substantial.
And how soon do you think you'd be able to get them?
I don't know, however, however long it takes to pay for them and get them here from New Jersey.
They'd be trucked up from New Jersey, I imagine they would come in pretty short order.
I mean, because if it's something that we could do now, or is it like Kevin's saying, is it something...
No, and I talked to the landscape consultant and they think that they have no issue with doing it now. They think that it's, you know, it's getting, it's getting late, but it's not too late. So they were fine with it.
Start.
I got two basic questions about this one. On Building Three, your back, your rear setback is only 15 feet. So there's a now one zone. And it should be 50 feet, I believe, according to the zoning bylaws.
When you're talking Building Three?
One of the butts is...
You're talking Building Two.
Yeah. I mean, was there...
It was Building Three originally.
Was there some kind of a variance given out by anybody?
Nope.
I'm, I'm new to the process.
So you were talking about the 50-foot buffer zone?
See, I'm looking at it right here.
Yeah, the 50-foot buffer zone only applies, don't forget, we're under the original Business Highway Sustainable Zoning District. The 50-foot buffer zone only applies when you have a rear yard that abuts the residential sub-district of the Business Highway Zoning District. It complies. There was no variance required.
See, the zoning bylaw, I can find it?
Yes.
Because I'm looking at the month data, 2023, and it says 50 feet.
You're looking probably at the late...
My modifications to site plans are supposed to be approved here at the planning board.
Well, we're not subject to the...
Now, wait, let me, because this is the second concern. Because I don't know about anybody else, but I think it's time for another site visit up there to find out where it really stands.
Sure.
Why isn't there retail in this development?
Because this was, again, this was part of the original Business Highway Sustainable District Zone, where retail, mixed-use wasn't required. It was encouraged, but it wasn't required. There was a lot of talks, there was a lot of talk with the board at that time whether or not a commercial component would even survive this far off of Route One. And the thought at the time was that this is the commercial component, this is the critical mass of people that will help these survive, and it was never required. And it wasn't a zoning requirement in the original bylaw, which is what this was permitted under, was the original bylaw.
So you're saying that the adjacent property serves as retail environment for this particular development?
Correct, yeah, and it wasn't like it's a requirement now. Now you have to have, there's been amendments to this bylaw that requires you, you have to have a mixed-use component. In the original bylaw, it wasn't a requirement.
So that's set, and let's go back to that setback, because I think that's frankly important if you're talking about emergency vehicles. And because there's a stone wall behind it, I mean, granite wall.
There's a ledge face by it, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so if you're, if you're dealing with something as small as 15 feet and you got a granite wall, how do you get emergency vehicles back there if they're necessary?
This all went through the planning board process at the time, and it was discussing with them. They were happy with access to three sides of this building, and they were happy with the 15 feet, it was enough room for them to be able to throw ladders, if they needed to throw ladders.
Have they written that up? Has the fire department written it up?
I don't recall what the comments were back in 2018, but those setbacks were all discussed with the fire department. This was reviewed early.
I'll be honest with you, I'll be honest with everybody here. I think the fire department should be, give far more explanation as to what they're looking at in their approval on this. And I don't care whether anyone cares to hear that or not, but as I look at that plan, I see that 15-foot, I'm saying, holy smokes. You gotta have people, a lot of people in that building. And those buildings are wood-framed.
Yep.
I will point it...
I know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be sprinkled.
No, no, not only sprinkled, there's been a number of concessions made to the fire department. Every unit now has addressable heat detectors in addition to smoke detectors, so they can actually come and find out where the fire is. That was the whole purpose of that. We, that was substantial cost that we endured for that and agreed with the fire department to add those. We also have a BDA system, bidirectional antenna that connects directly to the fire department. All these things are...
They don't know that. In this plan, including what you're saying, they have to be included in our approval.
Those were comments of the fire department in the building.
I'm just saying, so do you guys have that, and do they write anything out?
Quite frankly, it's been difficult to get anything in writing from anybody in the town. There's no offense to that, but I mean, these are just concessions that we made. We have emails where they asked for, and we have the cost to show you that we endured it and it's in place now and they're testing it.
Do we have some, I would think...
I don't, I don't think the level of plans that were submitted...
I think the board wants something from you folks, saying the changes that you made to make those buildings, particularly if you have that granite wall behind Three.
Wouldn't that be part of the ASBelt process when we submit for the occupancy permit?
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, and you're certainly entitled to all that information. But keep in mind, there's a whole nother process, you know, the building permit process goes into a lot greater detail what happens inside these buildings than the site plan review process does. Quite frankly, the site plan review process wasn't really created for, for the planning board to be burdened with all the issues inside the buildings. We'd be happy to provide it, these weren't really changes that we decided to make, these were requests that were put upon us by the various inspectors during the inspection process. Some of it was done during permitting at the building permit. Others of it, like the heat detectors and that sort of thing, came, you know, through, like walkthroughs and inspections where, you know, buildings do evolve and oftentimes you see ways to make them better, and that's what happened.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, I have, like I said, I'm new to this particular one. And the only thing I saw from the fire departments was, you know, we're done our review and we have no problems with it. But if they were asking for additional fire protection on those buildings, then that is something that's new and different and should be put to paper.
Yeah, we have no problem submitting any of that. I mean, does that get submitted to you? It'll probably be on the ASBelt, or it should be on the ASBelt.
Yeah, before they come back, they have to come back before us for an occupancy permit.
Yeah, but they're doing this extra bit.
Well, I think that the fire stuff, as the fire goes through, that's what the fire department does. As they go through, they are continuously asking and changing.
That's right, and those weren't necessarily code requirements. Those were above and beyond the code requirements, but, yeah, I mean...
Your folks would go along with, you know, the requirement, but I think it's good. Like, right now, I don't know about anybody else in this board, but I'm just finding out about that. And since I know damn well that surrounding communities have had problems with fires and other wood-framed buildings. You know, and, and the limited access that you have to that particular development, you got, it went beyond 500 feet. And, and once you consider the depth going to the end, that's extreme. And added protection that can be made available to the inhabitants, I think should be done. And we should know about it.
It sounds like that's what they're doing.
We take that, yeah, we take that very seriously. We take that very seriously, and that's why we, we didn't even push back on those things, we just added them. I mean, there's also additional, or low-frequency enunciators that were included and...
So when you come back with your ASBelt plan, you're going to have a list approved by the fire department of the changes you've made, of the additions that you've put into the development.
Are you looking for like a letter on letterhead from them, or just...
Yeah, that would be something we could ask the fire, if we could ask Captain Phelan.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that should be available, considering what you're talking about here.
It's also documented as he's inspecting all this too. I mean, there's a permit open and they're inspecting these things as we go. So we have rough ends and he's working through finals right now.
And those detectors are only in that building too?
No, they're in every single building.
So tonight...
245 units.
Sorry. So tonight, are you looking for us to, a motion to approve the two minor changes for the landscaping and for the...
The EV stations.
Relocating of the EV stations?
Yeah, and then we're just opening the discussion on, well, we've already been talking about phasing and how we're gonna handle the logistics and stuff like that. We have a phasing plan that I think it was submitted.
So that probably need to put on like an agenda, as an agenda, right? But this is just for an informal discussion tonight?
Yeah.
Do you have those two time-sensitive?
Yeah, so it's, it sounds to me, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me what I'm hearing is maybe the EV charging station, the landscaping could be considered a minor modification, but the idea of phasing might be something we want to put into a hearing for the next time. But we'd still like to just have a discussion on it, brief you on it. We're happy to repeat the discussion at a public hearing, but I think it's good just to kind of inform the board what we're thinking, if you guys are...
And I think from what I'm hearing from the board members at least, Bob, that maybe a site visit in between before we, you get on an agenda, before we talk about any of that stuff. We can move on.
Yeah, same as I think...
Just to clarify with it, hope that we would vote, hope that we would vote. A site visit, and at our next meeting, we, they would give us a list, not a verbal, you know, as we're doing here today, but a verbal list of what the changes that they're looking for.
Inside the building?
So what I, just, just fucking, what I, what I think you're talking about, the fire stuff, which is super important, safety?
That's, that's, right now, I can just put the fire stuff aside from what they're asking you tonight.
Tonight, what my understanding is...
I'll put the fire stuff up.
Right.
I'm just saying that, when there's it that we're going to do, since there is a, Mr. Salvo's saying that there's a previous approval of that backyard, although I fail to see how, how the planning board had ever, ever meant any kind of a variance.
They can't, they don't have the ability to grant the variance.
I can't see how the planning, unless it's part of...
It conforms to zoning, that's...
What I'm saying to you, if it was part of the original approval of this type of developments at the, we go to town meeting, then that should be in the documents that were at town meeting.
What?
They didn't go before town?
This had to go before town meeting.
No, no.
Why would this go before town?
No, I'm saying, this had to go before town meeting. The changes, the side gaps and back gaps and all that had to be already established as to what they're asking town meeting for.
Except for a zoning change, you mean?
A zoning change, yeah.
Yeah, when the Business Highway Sustainable District was created, it allowed for that side gap setback.
That's what I'm saying.
By right, yeah, there wasn't a variance requested or granted.
Would you want to see the records of that, you're saying?
No.
I'm confused.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying very simply is, I believe that we should vote to have a site visit between now and our next visit.
Yeah.
Our next meeting. Secondly, the things that we discussed tonight, that if they want you to agree to them, or us, agree to them, that they should be actually in writing.
Is it, didn't we submit those?
Yeah, we did.
That's easy, right?
Yeah, we already submitted, yeah, we did submit it and...
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
Let's see things on paper.
So, we have, we have lots of paper here. So I think some of these things are time-sensitive, right? So they're talking about three different things. I think, I think, I don't want to assume, tonight we're thinking that since two of them are time-sensitive, we could vote tonight whether we think, so they come before us with these informal discussions...
What's time-sensitive about this?
The plants.
Plantings.
The plants, it's gonna be winter. If you lived in Long, have you been down there?
That's what I'm saying, we should have a visit.
Bob, we're fighting, Mother Nature is fighting, winter's coming. And they were supposed to put, they took some trees out, out of the back of the property, right? So now if you live on Longwood Ave, you're looking at all this, all the vegetation's gone. They agreed that they would replace that with these tall trees. Now, we, Chris Riley was in charge of that, Chris Riley, a planner, I won't name him, planner is now gone, so some time lapses. They, they are willing to hunt these trees down and get them in ASAP before the snow falls.
Are you just voting on trees, Danny?
We're gonna vote on trees? And then the electric charging stations, because the charging stations was a change, but it's really not a major change because it's mandated by the fire department. Well, not really mandated, but the, the fire department is...
Location was mandated.
They don't want them underneath anymore because of fire, it's a fire hazard. So a lot of these new buildings now, they're making, the fire department is making them, move them outside. So it's not a major issue, and it's not a parking, because parking's not tight, they have plenty of parking. So if they move these six charging stations from underneath out here, it's a sick, it goes right to your safety thing that you like.
They were gonna put charging stations underneath the building?
Yes, now they're moving.
The charging stations proposed in the garage, that's how the building permit got issued and that's how it got approved. And the fire department, and like I said earlier, and we run into this in many municipalities, most fire departments don't like these fire, these charging stations inside the building. They don't like them to be outside of the building.
I will add, on several occasions in numerous municipalities across the country, we've had the same discussion, we've brought in experts regarding the battery systems on those and proven to them that there's no more danger than a regular combustion vehicle catching fire. And actually, the circuits that go in these now, cut them off if there's any issue. So, we understand that it's subjective, and Captain Phelan didn't like it, and we agree. We took them out of the building. But we do have them, I mean, New Jersey requires 20% of the parking spaces. If you don't put them in a parking garage, you can't meet that requirement.
So, we would, what we would be voting tonight, if it's a minor or a major, and then we would vote them. Those two things, and then we're gonna do a site visit, and then they're gonna come back with the other things, because it sounds a little bit more...
Yeah, so would we schedule a public hearing for, for the next one to discuss the phasing, or would it just be...
Be a public hearing.
Yeah, it would be a public hearing, because that saves you the step of coming in for a major or minor.
Exactly.
You know, we're gonna go major, so skip that step and save yourself a couple of weeks. Yes, so I would do that, so we could advertise that as a public hearing. So, do I have a motion to whether these two changes, the relocating of the electric charging stations and the landscape, do you want to do them together? Are we major or minor? Make a motion, let...
Wait, before that, you have those little stations on this map? On this site plan?
They are.
Here?
Oh, they're not, I think you have the wrong plan, there's two that are going, one's going right here and one's going here. I think you're saying you clouded one.
I just got these today.
Yeah. He doesn't have the clouded copy, but if you can see where Rick is right here.
Mr. Salvo, where are they?
Here, here, and here.
Here, here, okay.
So I'm right at the...
And where's the third one? You got the two together.
Well, there's, you know, it's called the southeast corner of Building Two.
Yeah.
And then it'd be at the northeast corner of Building Three.
Yeah.
It'd be the next one to come online, and then it's in between Building One and Three on the south side of the property.
Okay, good.
So there's three stations total, each with two charging ports, six total charging stations.
Do you have any other charging stations on the ground?
Nope.
Okay. There you go. Can I get a motion on the landscape plan? Relocating of the, changing up the landscaping plan, we'll do them separately. We'll do them separately, as a major or a minor, make a, Mr. Mandel.
I'd like a motion to consider the change, the movement of the landscaping to be a minor change.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very frank.
Okay, motion passes. Did you say aye?
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Okay.
You need my vote, I thought.
No, we get four, we get four votes and one abstained.
Oh, yeah, John does one.
Do I have, that's right here, abstained, so, so motion passed.
I'd like to see a motion to consider the movement of the charging stations. Six charging stations as a minor change.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstained.
Four to one abstained. Motion passes. Thank you.
Do we need to review that at all or just submit it?
Site visit?
Yeah, I would just ask, just let me know when you wanna do the site visit, so we can coordinate that with the contractor and get you access.
Okay, yeah, I think you're right. We voted that it was minor, now we have to vote the, the actual change, so...
Can I, um, ask one question about the planting again?
Sure.
'Cause you mentioned possibly needing access from, um, somewhere else and, you know, twelve to fifteen-foot trees are probably over five hundred pounds, right? And needing equipment, so... Is there access needed from elsewhere, but also if one needed to be replaced next spring or fall, if it didn't survive the winter? You know, would there be a way to access them at that point?
We would ask that they were all, until they're established, fully established and healthy and thriving, we would ask that that access to manage them however would be from Longwood Ave. Would have to be, there's no other way.
Access, but...
Fifteen feet. Basically a, uh, town-owned road. I happen to be the only abutter on it.
What, Longwood?
On Longwood Ave, that's listed as Longwood Ave Extension.
That's actually a long...
You can access this project from Longwood?
You can't.
No.
With permission from the board, you can?
No.
And we're trying to access the...
Because it was written that only Route One and ninety-nine...
No, not the access, just to maintain your trees.
Just to plant, just to plant.
Even use a street coming out that hitches up to a residential street.
Well, unless the board...
We wouldn't have been able to connect the water through there. We wouldn't have been able to connect the sewer through there. And this is just to plant a handful of trees. There's no access to the site from there. This is to access off-site trees.
With a watering can.
Like a skid steer and, right?
With a watering can.
Small excavator.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to, um...
That side.
On the actual minor changes?
Can we combine the two?
They won't get equipment back there, they might be a law firm, but, uh...
Yeah. But they can probably crane back there.
I'll make a motion to, uh, vote if we wanna accept the change, uh...
Vote the minor change for?
The minor change for the, um, for the landscaping, for the seven trees.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four, do you wanna abstain, Nancy?
Oh, Nancy?
Nancy, she's recording it. Are you recording it? You are secretary.
I mean, we'll try to keep as much of the access from the site side this weekend. Hopefully they'll be able to crane them from that side and be able to get as much of the equipment on that side as, as possible, but if it, if, if it becomes logistically not possible...
Maybe just coordinate with the abutter so they can make sure that there's no...
No issues, I agree.
No issues, okay. Thank you. And we have one more motion to approve the other minor change of the relocating of the charging stations, right? You just did the landscaping.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion, what she said, for, um, uh, to accept that the six charging stations will be moved.
Seconded?
Captain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, four and one abstaining. Okay, thank you.
No, no, no.
Nope.
Excuse me, Pat, Jim. I'd like to have, make a motion to have a site visits.
Seconded?
Soon as possible.
Okay, so we wanna pick the date, 'cause I know you like the date locked down before we can go home.
Last time we set a date, someone didn't make it.
That's true.
Someone didn't think we needed it, so... I just wanted to make you get up at eight o'clock.
The guy was there.
No, in all honesty, I thought it was at nine. I'm, I'm up at like four-thirty, but I thought it was nine.
I heard the whole honesty reminder.
I would've been there at nine.
On the site, yeah.
Still didn't call me and tell me it was over at eight-twenty. Okay, site plan. I mean, uh...
It's here tonight.
What?
Go ahead.
Site visit, when do you want your site visit?
No, 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 this is, we got that site visit we had.
Okay.
Well, let's finish this link.
I'm, I'm trying.
Remember it's something that...
You can touch that after the meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Somebody pick a date for the site visit, please. Do you wanna, a weekday?
You tell us.
A weekday, 'cause you'll, you'll be there.
Strictly, I won't be there, but we have the ownership. Company has onsite representation pretty much every day. I'd like to coordinate with those guys, so I would say probably Tuesday, Tuesday through Thursday next week.
Then Monday, Saturday.
I mean...
Tuesday through, okay.
Can always make accommodations.
Okay, what, what time works for everybody?
It's gonna be tough for me, I'm five AM and seven PM.
And you don't get out till five. What time are they, are you guys there till?
It's time to do it late, 'cause it'll be dark. Can't wait to do it after four o'clock now, right, or four...
They're there on Saturdays.
Yeah, can you make it though?
What time is it, what time is it?
I mean, it's dark at four-thirty, so...
Yeah.
A little later than that, but yeah, I mean...
What time do you start in the morning, yeah? Do we go real early?
They usually start about seven o'clock.
You mean at seven?
Seven? Seven.
I mean, we could always have somebody go earlier, we're just, the terms in the, in the development order, we, our working hours are seven to five. We can always try and have somebody there earlier, if that's okay with you guys. We just have to coordinate it.
At a Saturday.
You're gonna have to sleep there in your car.
Still dark at seven.
I'll go back home and take a nap.
That's true.
Okay, so...
Still dark at seven.
That's true.
No, not now, it's not, now that the clock went bad. Sun comes up now, what, at six? Six, six-ten?
I watch it every morning, yeah.
Six-ten, right? So, I mean, I'm not saying we'll be there six-ten, but...
You do it Saturday morning.
They're not there on Saturday.
They're, they're, they work on Saturdays.
Oh, they do work on Saturdays?
Not, yeah, I don't know, I'd have to coordinate that with our owner's rep, 'cause I'd like him to be there with you guys.
It might be better to do it on a Saturday, especially like afternoon, because there'll be less activity going on. It'd be easier to walk around the site with less activity going on.
You don't have to sleep in the car. Saturday works.
I'm gonna give you a call.
What would the next, the next hearing be on the twenty-first?
Yes, so...
Next meeting is November twenty-first.
Yes. So we could do, um, so we'd have to do...
I can't do this Saturday.
So the sixteenth? You wanna do the sixteenth, Saturday the sixteenth?
That could work.
And I, I may be able to get to that one.
Okay, so do we wanna say ten AM, eleven AM?
Yeah, and if something...
I don't wanna do it in the middle of the day, 'cause then it ruins the...
I can coordinate this and then just shoot you guys an email to, to cement everything in and...
Ten?
Ten.
Ten, nine? I, you, you tell me, what time? Not eight, Bob didn't like eight.
I don't care.
Nine?
Is that too early?
It's not too early for me, I'm up at four, so...
What do you mean?
Those guys, I think it's eight to five on, on Saturdays is what they work.
Okay, so nine o'clock on Saturday the sixteenth. Bob, you making the motion?
I do. Motion to have a site visit, November sixteenth, nine AM.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, a forward one. Okay, and, um...
Do you wanna do this reference? Yeah, say one, two.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, while we're here.
I mean, just what, just what we're looking at and then obviously you guys will get a better deal when you get to the site. They do have a little ways to go to finish up inspections and clean the site up and get it prepared to what we would say would be suitable for somebody to live there, but... At the first turn, we would have, you know, the entryway completely done. They're working on, uh, closing out the DOT permit right now. Asphalt just to, uh, the west side of Building Three. This would all be, you know, construction controlled by the contractor. All of Building One, all the associated amenities, trash, and pet spa. Everything behind Building obviously less than pool, because returning in a cold time of the year, but that would be available upon first, they're going through the, the DOT inspections there now. Total seventy-eight units would be the first turn. We have approximately a hundred and nine parking spaces, so we're overparked there. I have the breakdown of one and two bedroom units if you guys need that. So that's what we'd be looking to do in the next, all thirty to sixty days.
So the red would be the construction fence?
Yeah.
And what you, what you were discussing earlier, um, and I'm sure it was, this area here is where Captain Phelan plans, once this fence is in place, he's gonna bring his apparatus in here and make sure he can turn around and have him tweak the fences to be, if there's any issues with it.
I was told by the contractor on site today that they're ready to do this at any times and coordinate with Captain Phelan this meeting.
So the, so the living space would be completely separated from the, um, construction zone by a fence. How many two bedrooms are you looking at? So there's, um, thirty-eight ones and forty-two's, um, in, in that building, which would require a total of ninety-eight parking spaces. There'll be a hundred and four parking spaces provided in that space.
So, on, on this, um, report?
Maybe Kevin can look at it.
Hmm?
Maybe Kevin can take a ride up.
This is a report that we have from, uh, oh, sorry. From, uh, you have mine?
I'm ashamed if I may speak. There's some reports from Tetra Tech.
Okay.
That show concern on, uh, several items. Slopes are grades or not, that, that don't exist on the ground. That he, they honestly think it's very steep. So maybe we could, if, if Kevin has the time, it's probably better during the week, but, um, if he could, if he could take a ride out and review the list from Tetra Tech?
Can we get a copy?
Yeah, can we have a copy of that?
Uh, Nancy, can you send Mr. Salvo a copy? Or do we have an extra one here tonight?
Yeah, you can have mine. I don't have it.
I can do a picture of mine and give him this.
Okay.
Some concerns that they've, uh, around control as well.
Which are used for... I just figured it would best to get this out in the open...
Yeah, absolutely.
Rather than come back and have this pop up again and...
No, we're happy with that.
Send it back to square one.
He, he reviews and does site inspections, that's just a report.
Oh, this is on the, uh, the independent?
No, this is eight-sixty.
That's our, that's our peer review.
Third-party peer, yes.
Oh, I thought you meant, I thought it was independent.
Independent report?
These are his comments, yeah.
And Genie, you had mentioned number two about the poles. So, I think, you know, whatever that proposed remedy is, in talking to the building inspector, um, that's a big one for accessibility.
Oh, yeah, that, it can't stay the way it is. I don't know why they built it the way that they built it.
Which one's that, I'm sorry?
The poles and the side...
Oh, yeah, that's what Rick's...
That's why we're getting, um, audience wire is gonna locate them tomorrow. Yes, we'll, we'll see what we can...
And a number of these have been completed. I mean, the one that would immediately jump out as concerning to me is the number five, which is gonna affect the landscaping.
What's that, number five?
Uh, it appears the earth and berm is being rough graded adjacent to the southeast corner of Building Three, which does not appear to be proposed on the approved plans. Additionally, the topography behind Building Three does not appear to be consistent with the approved plans. There's a low area currently exists between the earth and berm and building finished floor, which may cause drainage issues. So if there's an issue there, that will affect, uh, height of the fence as well as height of trees.
That's basically returned to the natural slope that was there.
What's that?
That the way it exists now is basically put back, so elevations to the existing slope.
Correct, which I believe is a concomitance.
Yeah, no, I wanted, I asked the developer to make it higher as the abutte. It's, it's, it's the way the house is laid out to the, to the building.
Yeah, I, I don't see any needs to be insurmountable and we can, we can respond to that.
So if it's drainage, then we could...
Yeah, I don't see that undoing anything that we voted on tonight.
No.
I think we can, we can respond to it and...
I should bring it to your attention.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. We can't address it unless we see it, so...
Yeah, I don't think any of this other stuff is either not in process or completed.
We'll, we'll develop a response to it.
I know there was one other thing that he had asked me about, is the inspection reports of the stormwater.
The, the stormwater?
All your, all your retention tape. Who, you had a couple of them signed off by, um, I don't know who. And then I know the last one was signed off by...
So that, that's been a confusing process for us from the get-go and we've talked about that in previous hearings.
Yeah.
We provided a number of checks to the town for inspections, that included StanTech, Tetra Tech, and now Arcadis. We were, I think we were provided probably three reports from Tetra Tech early on and they were never provided, those after they were doing inspections. And I talked to Kevin today as well, it was a little confusing, 'cause Tetra Tech was removed and then you had Todd Baldwin left as the engineer. You had Larry Durkin in there that was then doing some of the inspections, which we never got reports for. And then Arcadis definitely did the one that's associated with Building One. We have not received a report for that, but they told us we were good to cover it up. I know Rick signed off on it as well, but, I mean, we're willing to do whatever and document whatever. We have a lot of pictures of everything.
So those reports don't come back to us anyway? Those would go to DPW, that's like, that's work.
Well, no, we, we have site, site vision control.
Well, yeah, and the Tetra Tech, I think reports probably should've come through you, Well, yeah, the Tetra Tech, I think reports probably should have come through you, because I think Tetra Tech was working for the town board.
Tetra Tech does, but, but, I think that was through...
I, I think StanTech only did the off-site stuff, right?
Right. Tetra Tech was out for about a year and a half, or close, a little over a year anyway. So, the, the question that may come up is who signed off on what?
I've talked to Arcadis about, they have one more inspection, and there's one more containment to go in, right?
Behind Building Three.
I can find out, I know they're signed up for that. I can find out what they've done.
The case is only on that. The case did two things. They, they reviewed the original stormwater report, I mean, stormwater permit, excuse me, and then they got brought on because they were the reviewer of the stormwater originally, when, when Larry had left, there was no one to review it, so they came on to review that last system. But every system has been inspected by a third party beyond, beyond us before they were backfilled, so those reports have to exist. I'm sure we can hunt them all down.
We did pay, we paid for the inspections. That went into an escrow or whatever account the town has, but there was a number of checks that were provided for that.
Okay.
I just didn't want that to become a problem for you, or any pavement that may go in without an inspection should, should it have to be opened back up again.
I'd like it to not be a problem for us as well.
And the reality is, is we own everything at the end of the day, anyway. There's no maintenance responsibility that falls back on the town at all.
Correct. That, that, we provided a letter early on, a signed letter that...
We'd be flooding our own site if we didn't install these correctly. It wouldn't...
Only because of, only because of the location of wetlands. And I know your file was in, but the latest, as you, as you know, just came out, stormwater is now the big thing for these developments.
Well, the, the stormwater regs in Massachusetts live in the Wetlands Protection Act.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, so we had to deal with that through the Conservation Commission.
They just toughen them up, toughen fierce, because you're meeting them.
There'll be three reviews of the stormwater, engineering, reports, and Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So, there's plenty of belt suspenders.
I just, before you venture off, and there may be one more, as you noted, that may need to be inspected. You have one, one retention?
One left, yeah.
Yeah, behind Building Three.
It's just clarification. It might be worth your inspection.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you guys would notify the engineers just to...
Absolutely. That would be coordinated through the contractor, but they should be reaching out to you anyway now, I guess, for inspections.
And I did, I did see the site, and I know there's a little time before that happens. With the sidewalk, if that is widened, or you propose to widen it, and that was gonna be lawn area, that square footage of lawn area could be part of that stormwater, you know, recharge area. So, if, when you're looking to do something with the sidewalk, if it's widening it, I would look to see what's in the permits. There may be, you know, square footage that has to be made up elsewhere.
Yeah, I think what our, what our approach would, would maybe be, and what I'm thinking already before I see the survey, I don't feel that determine until we do the survey, would be to flip-flop it. Would be to put a grass strip between the curbing and the utility poles and put the sidewalk behind that, so there'd be a net zero change in, in impervious surfaces. Because there is, some of the, the parking lot has, they're kind of honeycomb pavers, right?
The grasscrete? Yeah, one of those is already installed right now between one and three, and then there's one more that goes in on the southeast side of Building Two at the end.
Because that all would be part of that stormwater analysis, so...
Yeah, and, and keep in mind that those, just you realize, and probably more information than you need at this point in the game, but they were originally designed to be paved. So, the stormwater system assumes that those are paved, and then during the process, we agreed to land bake them. We never went back and adjusted the drainage cabs and took that impervious area out, so they're actually...
You may have some room to work with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Is it worth of anything else? Questions?
That removal's gonna be tricky from the entrance to the...
It'll be fun.
...door entrance, huh?
We've, we've, we've worked with tighter.
Yeah.
It'll be fun, though.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
I think that's it.
Thank you. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
See you in a couple weeks. Well, we'll see you, well, we'll see you, Rick. You'll be there on Saturday.
Only a pot of coffee.
Please, please.
Coffee and a...
Never having a Daisy Woo.
Coffee and a pack of zoning plants.
I'm gonna go one, one step backwards before we get to that.
Go step backwards? Where are we going?
Well, we have an approval in the minutes of the meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, motion to, uh...
You too, thank you, John.
Good night. I can't make a motion for 15th, because I wasn't here.
I'll make a motion. Do you have a minute? Make a motion for the minutes of August 15, 2024.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. We have the minutes of September 19.
So moved.
Second.
Were you here, Phil? Were you here on the 19th?
I wasn't here, so I can't.
You were there, Genie?
I was.
Yeah, you must have been. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Minutes have been approved.
All right, now make your motion, Phil.
No.
We have a discussion?
Not on the agenda. Not on the agenda.
So, Daisy Lane withdrew the application.
Should we close the meeting first?
Yes, not on the agenda.
Don't they need a vote to withdraw?
I just, that's, what's that?
I think they need a vote to, to allow the withdrawal.
Uh, not if they withdrew without prejudice.
That's got nothing to do with it, John.
It's...
Without prejudice, what's that mean?
Not on the agenda, so maybe it's conversation. It's not on the agenda, so maybe it's a discussion you two have offline after the meeting. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Meeting is adjourned.
I voted twice.